Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to tonight's meeting, which is a school budget Board of Education workshop. Something we started last year and I found that was very helpful to my fellow council members. And it's very informative. It's going to be -- we're not following any strict rules. It's an open discussion. But I would like to ask that anybody who speaks from the administrators of the Board of Ed, that you mention your name for our note taker, okay? Because she doesn't know who you are. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Colleen Stanley. I'm the committee chair for the Board of Education Budget. My fellow members are Mr. Bobby Arcanti, Ms. Nancy Dee, Mr. Bob Riley, and Mr. Ben Chianese. We also have here tonight the director or the superintendent of schools, Dr. Sal Pascarella. We have the director of finance of schools, Eli Longo. We have the School Board Finance Committee via Chair Rich Giannelli. And we also have School Board, Board of Ed member Irving Fox. We also have Mike, I'm sorry, Joe Taverzak, Rachel Austin, Eileen Alberts, and I believe Mr. Fozzie will be here. We also have ex-fisio council members, Joe Cavo. We have Paul Rotella, Don Taylor, Phil Curran, and members of the public. Did I miss anybody?
Just a correction, Colleen. Irving Fox is Board Chair.
Board, oh, I'm sorry.
And it's Bob.
He's got the crown.
And Bob Taverzak. Say Joe, don't I?
I always say Joe.
I thought maybe we could start off with maybe Ms. Eli Longo, if he wants to start us off? Or, okay.
Just to set the stage a little, just to provide some background. As you know, the financial times that we're under today are pretty unprecedented in terms of how difficult they are, both for the city and for the school district, as well for the state and other school districts across Connecticut. But the challenges are not just financial in nature. We're also under some of the most academically intensive regulations that this district has seen in quite some time, both from a result of our accreditation procedure, which was conducted about eighteen months ago with the regional accreditation organization and with the recommendations that they've come up with, especially in regards to our high school, but also in regards to the State Department of Education, who helped us to develop our district improvement plan to help meet the no child left behind adequately progress gains that are required for the district. And so if you take the combination of the financial conditions and the academic strains that we're under today, and also with the rising student population, you can see that these are very challenging times for Danbury City and for the school district as well. In that background, our work started last November in terms of developing a budget for the next school year, understanding that all of these conditions take place and understanding the limitations of the taxpayers in terms of funding our school operations. The board, with the superintendent, the administration, and much of the workforce in the district, helped to put together the budget that you see before you today that the board approved last month. This budget is a 3.8% increase, to be sure, but it is a budget that is, does not take the district forward in terms of what services are being provided today. The board in its deliberations did take about a million dollar cut off of our current service base in terms of forwarding that on to the city for its approval. But I think this budget represents the best case that the board can make to provide a fiscally sound budget without deeply cutting the services that our students really need to meet the requirements that are imposed upon us by the state. But never mind the imposition, these are standards we would want for our children and for our town going forward. And so with that background, I will turn it over to Dr. Pascarella and Mr. Longo to go in a little bit more further detail in terms of the details of the budget and what the thinking has been in terms of the compilation of the budget.
Thank you very much. Just state your name.
Sal Pascal, Superintendent. Thank you for having us here again this evening. Irving paraphrased mostly about what I was going to talk about relative to the background. But you need to spend a few minutes tonight, thank Colleen and Paul, and then coming to our meetings. I think you know how hard we've worked at. I think you do, in terms of trying to control costs. I think we need to spend some time about that. What I want to ask you tonight is to walk along with us here. You know, the front page of this says that we have an academically responsible budget and fiscally as well. I don't know if that's altogether true. We're kind of boxed into a situation with a budget that was given to us when we presented to you in the '08-'09 school year, in the spring. This is the budget we're operating under, and you know that. And with that, some things have come out of it the last few years that have been good because we've had to do some real reflection on what we're doing. The thing that's been hurtful in some respects, and I hear back from folks, and if you're making these gains, and we are, we're under the scrutiny of the State Board of Education. The school board here does not dictate what we do now. It is dictated by the State Board of Education. They have the accountability law, which says that they can take over the school system. They're not doing that in Connecticut. What they are doing is creating the condition for us to grow. And the board here is an advisory board to the Board of Education and State Board of Ed. And they kind of operate that very gentryly. And the State Commissioner was very mindful of doing that. But with that comes a lot of responsibility. And I can't do the things that we need to do in a way that's going to be as responsive as we need to do. And I've explained that to the Commissioner. And we're not the only ones in this fiscally challenging times. He realizes that. We applied for the race to the top money. We were there all day today in terms of, it's $180 million that we come to Connecticut. We didn't get it in the first round. We're going there in the second round. So we keep going to these meetings. I don't know if we're going to get it. There are a lot of issues and challenges that Connecticut is not being considered because of our lack of charter schools, lack of collaboration with the, with all of the towns buying into the race to the top, all of the unions signing in. Two states, Delaware and Tennessee, received the money on this round. So whether or not we get it, I don't know. But you need to know, we keep knocking on every door. We write Chris Murphy, Lieberman, everyone for money. In fact, we opened up a parent literacy center with $275,000. Not town money. Money we got from Chris Murphy and our congressional group, from Congress, from the feds. We got that. We just, we told today, we received $278,000 on a grant professional development. Colleen said something about a month ago, you guys cut back and you're still making gains. Yeah, we are, but we're at a tipping point. We're making gains because there are some, there are things that are happening in the classroom with a lot of capacity building. And we're getting to the point with reducing the number of teachers and professionals to support. You can't run the school systems with the type of needs our students have and run it at the same level with the type of resources that we have. And yet we have a budget, the school board said, you know, we know Sal, you'd need 4.8. And that was just moving forward with zero. But instead you have a 3.8% budget in front of you. That 3.8% budget hurts. And the reason why it hurts, if you look at the paging here, you can see that over the last three years, with a 3.8% budget, we've lost 57.8, almost 58 positions. We've lost about, of those positions, 5% of them are teachers, 10% of them administratively, 4% of them are support staff. We have pared down. In some cases, it's been helpful. It's made us much more focused. But where it's going now, when we start making cuts now, it's impacting the classroom. And the board has been very direct, saying reduce anywhere but that classroom. The teachers are trying to look through the budget, combing it, saying, where can we get money that doesn't impact the classroom? I don't know anymore. You could take the reading specialists out of the schools, but it's going to be devastating. Two years ago, we removed 14 of our reading specialists. Now we have half-time read, a math person in each building supporting teaching and learning, and we have one full-time reading person. If you know anything about some of the stuff that's going on, we push in all our students under what they call, under our special ed laws. And that's a good thing. But our teachers need assistance in working with students in their classes. Our class sizes, we've tried to keep reasonable, K-1. They're running now 21, 22. The upper school, you know, mid, from intermediate up are running up 23, 24, 26. Our teacher unions have been working with us. We have some standards in our contract that we've exceeded, but they've worked with Louis Bray, our personal director, and they know the economic times that we're in, and they've kind of backed off and ready to run those classes. You hear about the high school has some small classes? Well, yeah, because when you offer classes to comprehensive high school, you offer them in a sequence of four. So if a student begins a sequence of studies and he has to get a third year, we offer it. That's why we're certified through NEAS that Irving was talking about. We expanded our AP offerings. The AP in our schools will cause all of our curriculums to rise by now. And we're offering more of those. And we're doing it no cost to the town. We're doing it with a special grant that we're receiving. So there's things that we've been doing strategically to make a difference. But I can tell you, the 3.8 is a million less than what we need. And if you look at the kinds of things that we cut back on, you know, you can start seeing that class sizes are going up. You can start seeing we have less supervision. And what we're beginning to hear are things like, you know, there's problems in lunchrooms, there's problems in hallways, there's problems in, too many study halls, not enough. Well, what's going to happen is when you reduce numbers of teachers in sections, particularly at the middle of the high school, kids are going to wind up in study halls, they're going to wind up not supervised as well, things like that. But at the elementary school, where I think the lion's share of a lot of work that we do is being done, turning the scores around, and I included a page in there for you to look at the turnaround that we're doing, they require much more assistance, and they're not getting it. And we're putting more burden on them without the resources. So, you know, this budget before you really pairs down bare minimum, beyond that, by about a million dollars. I mean, in all honesty, I've checked with a lot of superintendents in the area, you know, we all know we're having the same problems. And we're right in the range of the same amount of money other folks are asking in terms of, from their municipalities. We got a zero this year. You were very helpful last year with a special allocation, and I thank you for that, just because they know we stole Roberts Avenue and that money we're holding every year. So, you know, and we've worked with, last year we were able to return how much to the city?
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand dollars of money that was not expended. I think, you know, we've been doing our fair share. If we received zero this year, the reduction of faculty and teachers was ninety-two?
Sixty-nine people.
Ninety people. We just can't run the place that way. You know, we can't run it for 180 days and expect us to give a quality education. You've heard something about the court case going, the CJ case. Well, the school, the talent, or the state's finally identifying what the word adequacy means. That means they have trained teachers, materials for kids, reasonable class sizes, and it's safety, and it's a positive environment. You know, we're bordering on providing that to our kids. And if you look at the page, what have you done for me lately to control costs? We've outbid our transportation. We've been working with the town. Paul Ropman's, using open source on the, you like that one? You know, we've got there. There are a number of things that we are doing. We sat down yesterday with our transportation department, we had board members there, we looked at all of our options. I can say honestly, in looking at it, and say, we've done what we put to control costs. Some folks say, well, you have too many administrators. Well, if you look at the percentage of administrators that we've reduced, we have. You have a large high school, almost the largest one in the state. I challenge anybody, go on and walk up there through those halls. The kids are respectful. The assistant principals know who the kids are. And that's, that comes at a cost. We start reducing those folks, we'll have conflict, we have expulsions. We have an eighth school, which has worked for a number of years, and our students are up there doing well. We don't want to close places like that. And yet this budget in front of you calls for a possibility of reducing athletics, looking at schools in terms of can we maintain them open? That's on the line. Our alternative program, you know, there's been a lot of talk about reducing suspensions and expulsions. We have, the teachers have, the administrators have, but we have Endeavor, which is an alternative program for middle school kids. We have Reach for kids who can't adjust at a high school or made a bad choice on a certain day, they're expelled. They're in there being educated, in a good program this year. And then we have our kids at Aces. All of that is being threatened under this budget. You can only go so long. It's like industry, you know what? You know, they're going to let somebody go and they're going to pile the work up on you. Well, the work for us is about kids. You said, as long as it's about kids, budgets are a go. Well, there are kids who need more than what we can give them, and the teachers can't keep working at the same level that they're working at with the lack of supply and support if we continue going down to road, less resources. So I implore you to work with us together and figure out how we can work through these hard times. There's got to be a way that we can put these youngsters in front and figure out respectfully how we can bring the resources to the table. There's contracts that we've negotiated with folks who've taken furlough. The cabinet took no increase last year. The teachers deferred some increases. Our custodians are at zero. You know, things have been arbitrated for us, but overall, I think we've worked both. Our employee groups, our employee groups are trying to help us. So we're working together. And I know the mayor has worked with us. I know he's been pushing to try to get us some more. I can only say to you that this is really fiscally a minimal budget, but it's one we know that we're, I think we need to go at least to try to keep the boat afloat. Do you have anything, Ann?
How you calling it?
Just mention your name.
Eli Longo, if it pleases the committee, you do have a handout before you this evening, and I can promise to keep it short, but it does provide the highlights. Yes. It provides the highlights of the budget building process that the Board of Education and administration went through over their course of the past six months. Beginning with the first item page, we've identified what we believe to be the major cost drivers for our budget. As you are aware, the current year appropriation totals $111.9 million, which is the '08-'09 level as well. As we look at our major cost drivers, we're a service industry. So service industry carries a large percentage of employee workforce. The largest labor force, our teachers, received a approved and awarded contract that will cost the Board of Education, the city of Danbury, approximately $2.3 million net next fiscal year. That is net of the allowance that teachers will contribute towards healthcare at a larger percentage, which is a request that we made of all of our labor unions, by the way. The $2.3 million of hard dollars represents approximately 2.1% increase to the current year budget. This year's budget includes what are one-time credits. We are aware of the era of the federal stimulus dollars. Of the federal stimulus dollars, in place of this year, we have $1.2 million. The $1.2 million for Title I and Special Education, it's been almost evenly split, 600 and 600. $600,000 for Title I will carry forward to next fiscal year. Unfortunately, the $600,000 we expend this year on Special Education will not repeat next year. The cost that we have tied to the $600,000 for era Special Education will carry forward with the school district next year, but the employees and the salaries will revert back to the general fund. So the $1.7 million includes $600,000 of era, which we must now absorb. Salary adjustments. Yes, sir?
I don't understand what you're saying.
Okay.
You mean about era money?
Yes.
What is era?
American Reinvestment Act, federal stimulus dollars.
The Obama bucks that came in from Washington?
We received an allocation of one, we received an allocation of $1.2 million. The 1.2 is evenly split between Title I, priority schools, and Special Education services for job creation and job retention. This year, we have in total $1.2 million of salaries and benefits covered by the era federal dollars. The $600,000 set aside for Title I schools will repeat next fiscal year, so it's not a concern for us at this time. The $600,000 tied to Special Education is for one year and one year only. The $600,000 goes away next year, yet the expense remains with us. So next year, we must build $600,000 to our budget request.
Mr. Kind, last year, when this became available, we could have, some districts elected not to use the money because in their view, they'd have to pay the piper down the road sometime. We elected to use the money and use the bill so we were able to save more jobs last year and implement our programs. And buttressed that money up to the money that was allocated from the city. As you know, last year was no increase. That's how we were able to get some money to do some things. So that's why we took advantage of it.
I have a better understanding now.
So there were new programs established for the special?
Well, it was interesting. We were allowed to, we're not allowed to supplant it.
So.
What?
That 600, if I'm not mistaken, was supplanting the, we're talking about that piece now, I believe.
The supplant?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, it's adjusted.
Okay. So there were known programs for that 600?
For job retention.
Yes.
Okay. So the answer is no.
Yeah, I just want to follow up. As you said, so you said the $600,000 that's being repeated this year, that's the Title I.
Yes, sir.
So, but the 1.2 million that's not going to be repeated this year, those were new programs that were created last year?
No, the 1.2 is a sum of the two 600s. Okay? It's $600,000 repeats and the remaining $600,000 goes away next year. Total value is $1.2 million.
But this one, that's the $600,000 that's going away?
Yes, sir.
Were those new programs that were created just for that?
No, they were not.
They were not?
No, they were existing programs, existing employees. It was a shift of burden away from the general fund to the federal stimulus dollars as part of job retention. Otherwise, in the absence of the era funds, last year we were likely looking at additional layoffs.
Eli, can I just jump in on Louis Bray and the Director of Human Resources? If the additional layoffs would not necessarily have been with the people who the money was used to save their jobs, that was money used for special ed, special ed teachers. Our special ed program is obviously constrained somewhat by the law and by education programs put in place because of the special ed laws. So we would have had to eliminate the positions in other areas, classroom teachers, that sort of thing. This is job retention money that we use to save some jobs.
Salary adjustments? The Board of Education annually budgets for a salary adjustment of approximately $640,000. In a, it's called a normal year, we anticipate or expect approximately 32 employees either retiring or be attrition, where we have a higher paying employee exit the district than we would replace with a lower salary individual. With the average savings over the past course of the past five to seven years, approximately $20,000 differential variance on it, we would anticipate 32 and 20,000, hence we would book $640,000 of savings as a contra account to our budget. Last year, we had a very and highly successful early retirement incentive program on it. The probability of expecting and anticipating an additional 30-plus employees to retire or exit this year will be, this coming year will be highly improbable, unlikely on it. Therefore, the $640,000 worth of credit has been reduced to 140. The difference being we have $500,000 of cost shifting back to the general fund for next fiscal year. And the remaining piece is the city supplement. Yes, our appropriation this year is approximately $112 million. When we're to total or tally up our expenses, our expenses come in at 112.6. We shortly assume we will come before the council with a formal request for the $600,000 supplemental appropriation. The $600,000, we all know, is the, you know, the sale of the Roberts Avenue School to the state of Connecticut on it. In the absence of an additional property transfer next year, we will have to absorb the expenses as well. So the three one-time credits identified, total of $1.7 million. The $1.7 million is approximately 1.5% of our budget. The first two items identified combined, 2.1 and 1.5%, has us at 3.6%. So we're very close or near to the 3.8% that the Board of Education requests of the city council. Healthcare, we expend approximately $20 million per year. We're fortunate in the sense that we've negotiated with our current provider, Cigna, a renewal rate of approximately 8.4%. For our Board of Education, that's unheard of. And it's not that we've paid historically 20, 25, and 30, and now we're averaging down. We've had successful renewal rates going back maybe five, eight years ago in the mid-teens levels, and most recently we were in the very low teens, 10 to 12%. We've heightened our competitive bidding process between the major players, Cigna and Anthem. And we continue to this day to negotiate with Anthem and the incumbent, Cigna. The firm offer we have on the table at this time presents approximately $1.6 million cost increase. 1.6 of new dollars, 1.3% of a budget increase. We're well over approaching over 4%. All other labor settlements, absolute value is about $300,000. And the transportation will cost the Board of Education approximately $400,000 next year.
For the process?
Yes, for student transportation. So while the major cost drivers identified exceed and quickly approach 5%, the Board of Education has reduced its request and its operating costs to the value of 3.8% or $116.2 million.
Have the contracts, have the contracts gone out for next year for the teachers yet?
Mr. Bray?
You mean literally the printed contracts? The contract, sure. The contract was negotiated for a two-year period, which is this year, we're in now, and next year, so the teachers have their contract for next year as well, yes.
Ben, you mean their assignments?
I want to talk about who's not going to come back.
Oh, we don't, we don't necessarily know that until, they are not required to tell us literally until August. So there is always the possibility that someone may tell us they're not coming back later on. That is usually not the case. However, we do not anticipate very many retiring, probably fewer than 10 this year because of what the early retirement last year.
When we negotiated the contracts a couple of months ago, how many new teachers reached the top tier? Have that been calculated in here?
It is. It's all captured. I don't have the actual number, but it's all captured, yes. The next slide presents the cost composition of the board's request valued at $116 million. Salaries and benefits, combined values just under 80 cents on a dollar. When we look at items such as equipment and supplies, we're looking less than a nickel on a dollar basis on it. So it's very challenging and very difficult for a school district to address budget cuts without reaching far into its labor force. And again, the combined value of benefits and salaries approaches 80 cents on a dollar. Formulating what we believe to be a responsible request to the city council, the amount required to carry forward or roll forward the existing school programs would cost the city approximately 4.8% increase, or $117.2 million. The board has since revised its request to 3.8 or to 116.2, and the budget before you this evening calls for a million dollars of reductions. The areas where cuts were made by the board include, in terms of FTE, and FTEs are full-time equivalencies. Teachers, assigned to classrooms within classrooms, total of 4.0. Teachers or non-classrooms, such as instructional teachers, coaches, 1.0. Administrators, 2.4 positions. Administrators, 2.4 positions. Non-certified staff, 2.0. For a total reduction of workforce next year of 9.4, add a 3.8% budget award. The effective programs and services for teachers in the classrooms, there's a reduction at both the elementary and middle school for our gifted and talented programs, a restructuring of set programs. We will eliminate the University of Bridgeport internship program.
Now, just understand, those intern programs that the district embarked on a few years ago, we use them as substitute teachers in the school system. We get about 14 of them, so they're there every day, and we buy them, and they're very enough. But in light of the budget, you know, we had to eliminate that. That's going to impact our budget in the area of substitute. That's the kind of thing that is happening now. As I was saying before, you know, we have the budget, but it may impact us a heck of a lot harder.
So you were paying these students to interns?
No, these interns were from, for example, they were from University of Bridgeport.
Right. And you paid them?
They paid. Instead, and then they get assigned to the building as substitute teachers. They know the school, they know the kids.
And they're more money than a substitute teacher?
Oh, no, they're less. That was my point. They're less.
Why would you get rid of them, though?
Because, because the soft part of the budget, which is the substitute part, is one that we can't anticipate. We're hoping that, you know, that that trend doesn't go as high. I mean, those, I guess what I'm saying is, those are the kind of choices that we're making. And it's happening with supplies, it's happening with tech supplies. That's how close we are. So we have to gamble a little bit here so that we can do that. And we have to be mindful of the substitute accounts and professional development accounts, all those accounts now, which hurts us for growing capacity of people to go out and learn and to implement the things that we're supposed to do to reduce the achievement gap. I mean, that's the kind, so we don't do as much of that, and we control it. So that's, those are the kind of decisions that we have to make. And we're going to be able to shift some of those into some title programs because of our reading program, but as far as the substitutes go, it may impact us that way.
Can I ask you a question? How many substitutes do you think you use when you're using this program? Do you use any at all? I didn't know if that the intern program, there was enough intern programs or interns, people that would use?
No. It's a small fraction of annual expenditure.
14.
There are 14 interns.
14.
Good to know, because I thought it was a huge program then.
Well, no, the district's having for about 10 years.
So in turn, you're gambling on possibility of maybe having to hire 14 substitute teachers at that time?
More subs. That's right.
We already have, we already, we already have it, we already do hire substitute teachers. But there'll be 14 less interns that we won't be able to use at a lesser cost.
That's right. In the pool of substitutes. In the pool of substitutes.
In summary.
Yes.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, please. Other effective programs at the middle school level, instructional coach position. Services and programs at the A school are kind of centered for excellence.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
What's a middle school instructional coach?
We have, at the elementary school, when we cut back all of the reading specialists, we had them at the middle school, and we cut them all back. Last year, we put in two coaches for all of our middle schools, for the two middle schools. They support, in this case, literacy at the middle school level with teachers implementing our reading and language arts program as our elementary school has. So we're going to cut one of them and just split the three to two schools instead of having two of them.
So it goes from two to one?
And that person runs workshops for the teachers in those schools?
Yeah. The strategy that we're using in schools, instead of trying to people, to have people leave, is to have people who are, who can lead the learning in the classroom so they can model what we want teachers to learn, and then they, they're there observing the teacher, the teacher observing them, and that's what this person does, assist the teacher in implementing that. And they observe along with the administrators, turn to giving feedback to the teachers. That's why we're seeing growth in the classrooms at the same. That's what's happening at the elementary school, and we're trying to implement that at the middle school, where we can get some help. So we're going from two to one to do that.
The athletic director position, I see here that you're going to just reduce it by 19 days. What type of impact will that have? Oh, we need to get through yet? Isn't that part of the effective program? I wish I just wait.
I guess you can guide him.
Okay. So the other effective programs include the Reach and Endeavor, which is a restructuring of administration, secretarial and custodial support in the district, stadium manager's position, which is vacant this year, we will not fill next year, and a reduction in funding for our district-wide professional development. On the following page, we identify the loss of FTE positions over the course of the past two years and proposed reductions built into next year's budget. Last fiscal year, 2008, 2009, we eliminated 14 literacy leaders across the district. For the current fiscal year at elementary level, we reduced math specialists by 1.5 positions, one classroom teacher, and 4.5 paraeducators. For the elementary level for the current fiscal year, we reduced staff by 7.0. Next year, with a 3.8% award, at elementary level, we will lose the equivalent of 1.0 teacher for the gifted and talented program. We do propose to reduce the athletic director position from 230 to 211 days, and again, to eliminate the UB intern. The total elementary FTEs is 1.0. Yes, sir.
But does 19 days pose the same? We're not, we're not just cut it in half, make it a part-time position?
Because we elect not to do that. We don't think as advisors we'll do that. What we elect them to do is to cut it back to our other administrative assignments, which are 210, 211. We think we need that minimally. We have, you know what the athletic programs did at that secondary school? The supervision, the accountability, the eligibility, the security issues that we have, the transportation issues, the management. We also gave, we had a person that was doing the stadium. We eliminated that. He now is doing the stadium. So, you know, we're, we're kind of playing with the business model, we're piling up on people. That's what's happening here, and we're reducing days. And we think that that's about as all as we can do with that.
So you said, and so that's more important than a talented and gifted teacher?
Well, I don't think you can do it on a black-white situation. If you look at gifted and talented, and you look at co-curricular as part of, systemically part of our programming, they're both very important. What we did with academically talented, we shaved it back, we didn't eliminate it. What we did with the athletics, we're shaving it back, we didn't eliminate it at the 3.8. If we go further in the budget, then the priorities begin, begin looking at those priorities. You know, you have to do that. And it may impact athletics. It may impact the electors at the middle schools more. That's what I keep saying to you, you know, what is adequacy for an education? You know, we think that, you know, they're both valuable to us, Ben. It's just a matter of, we tried to shave back instead of just eliminate at this point.
The athletic director, whose office is at the high school, is the, he is the director of all of the sports programs in the school system, middle school?
We don't have it at the middle school. They've eliminated that some years ago. It's basically at the high school.
Does he have anything to do with the gym, the gym programs?
He supervises or she would supervise physical education and health education as well.
As well as?
As well as the athletic director.
But the athletic director is at the high school?
Yes, yes.
I was just wondering why we have it listed under elementary.
Maybe it's a mistake.
Oh, it's a mistake.
We give some scholarships at the elementary.
At the middle school level, current fiscal year, we lost 10.6 FTEs, the makeup of which contains rural languages, 2.0, a reduction in technical education, family consumer science, fine arts, bilingual education, classroom teacher, and a social worker. New year budget request at the middle school level calls for a reduction in the gifted and talented of 2.0 FTEs, 1.0 instructional coach, and an administrator of the endeavor program for a total reduction at the middle school level of 4.0.
How many teachers do you have in the gifted and talented program overall?
One at the elementary, two at the middle?
Three.
You're already losing, according to your proposal, we're losing three of them already.
That's all there are.
So the program is going to be eliminated?
No, it's going to be an after-school wraparound program.
An after-school program.
So it can be another, another organization is going to run that program?
No, we will. We put money in the budget to run it after school. The elementary model gathers kids and brings them to a spot. We thought about that at the middle school, we're going to do each middle school have a program, but it'll be an after-school program, not a during the school program.
And that's not going to infect the program? Because I, when I went to that, that program in Rogers Park, and I was pretty impressed by the, the little young girl came up and spoke, so this is why I'm speaking for it now.
Let me interject, because I am, I'm the father of someone who's in the gifted and talented program. And so initially, in our deliberations, as we went through the last few months, the initial proposal was to eliminate the gifted and talented program completely, which again, would upset, again, it serves a small number of students, but again, a very talented group of students. But I think this goes to the point of us trying to do or to perform the same services for our students at a reduced cost. So if we can take an existing teacher and pay them a stipend to run the program, maybe it's after school and that's why it's a stipend versus having someone full, full-time receiving students all day long, it at least enables us to continue to provide services to those students who really need and benefit from those services. But it does in a little bit more cost-efficient way and helps us preserve or meet our budget targets. And so that's kind of the thinking. I think generally, the thinking has been, and the direction the board set out at the beginning, given if you look at the last year or two and how we've increased, class sizes have gone up and programs have been eliminated, you'll notice a lot of the positions that we're proposing to cut this year or more on a support, on a support basis. And the board specifically set the direction to try and stay out of the main classroom as much as humanly possible, given the budget constraints. And so you'll see a lot of support positions, extra programs that are either, in most cases, not eliminated, but done in a more cost-efficient manner to save positions in the classroom.
So these three individuals would be reassigned to another, not be, their contract is beginning to be renewed.
We deal with seniority. I think these three happen to be senior pros, and they are. So probably they'll, they'll bump people on the lower part still. You know, and just put this overlay on there. Last year, we did the ERa program. You say we have cost avoidance of about 925,000. Well, you know, what we did was, then we brought in a lot more teachers because they were much more economically cheaper. What's going to happen now, when we reduce on riffing, we have to reduce from the bottom. So it's going to take more people to reduce the makeup those salaries. So it's kind of a, we're going to catch 22 now. Those people that we recruited knew who were much more economical are going to stay. Last year was helpful, this year it's going to.
Can I just, can I interject on that for a second? Thank you. The, it's important to note, again, Louis Bray, Director of HR, thank you. Thanks. It's important to note that last year, had we not had that ERa, we would have had to eliminate twice as many positions, and we'd be in a much worse position now. Unfortunately, we've looked at the numbers and offering another ERa doesn't make sense. We think we might actually lose money on it.
To the teachers.
To the, to the teachers, correct. So if we were to do that, we would lose money. Unfortunately, the result is, we're going to have to lay off one teacher, the approximate cost with benefits is about 70,000 for a new teacher. And we would have to eliminate more of that than a 100,000 with benefits teacher. So there's going to be further layoffs than we would have had otherwise.
So to follow that, that scale, one year to the next year, your budget will more be even higher for those teachers because now they're going to go up one more tier.
Well, yes, but it would if we hadn't had an early retirement incentive. What would have happened is it would have been over a million dollars more than it would have been otherwise. That's the cost avoidance piece, that if we hadn't had that early retirement, had 60 teachers, sorry, 69 teachers take it, what would have happened is all, most of those folks would still be here next year, and we would be paying them top dollar, whereas the other people, instead of making 50,000, will now be making 53 as opposed to 75 or 80,000.
Well, why didn't you offer an early retirement system again?
Because according to our calculations, given the number of people who took it last year, if people took it this year, we have a smaller number of eligible, in the eligible pool, we have to pay out as well. So if we offered the same plan, just to use the number, and paid 75% of their salary over five years, we're building a cost into it that we believe, given the contra account that Elliot described earlier, the 640,000 that's built into the cost, we would, we wouldn't be able to meet that contra anyway, and we would end up having to pay out more than we saved by them going.
Do you know what the contra account is?
Elliot, you want to explain it again?
Yeah, because I have problems with this, so you better explain it. It's one of the, it's something that was devised to, for, for teachers that leave every year, in a budget, there is X amount of dollars attributed to that. And because a town can't dictate where we spend our money from, what they say is, look, you know, you give me 100 billion dollars next year, and we know you're going to lose 20 teachers, and that's going to equate X amount of money. So going into, if we have an allocation of 100 billion dollars, we may only get, you know, get 500,000 less. And that 500,000 would be in anticipation of people leaving. Is that right?
Correct.
Whoa, wow. Four years it took me to figure that one out. So we couldn't cover the cost of that if we did an ERa program right now. It would cost us. If we didn't have the ERa program, I mean, if we didn't have the contra, 00, then it might be a possibility.
And you can point out that there's a number of lost leaders that would be built into it. So there, we have to, we budgeted with the assumption, I believe, six or seven teachers would retire anyway. Normally, as you know, it's higher than that, but because of last year. So we don't have enough people towards the top to gamble that we're going to get twice that, because we need twice that now, just to make the contra account plus the amount of money we would have to pay out. And we don't think it'll happen, we just don't think we have the numbers this year. As the next couple, few years go by, it'll build up a backlog again, we believe.
At the high school level, current operating year, we lost 9.1 classroom teachers at the high school. Propose for the 3.8 new fiscal year, for the reduction of 1.0 teachers at the A school, an administrator of the Reach program, one supervising custodian, and we will, for a second year, not fill the stadium manager position. The duties and responsibilities, the stadium manager have been reassigned to current staff. Central Office District-wide, current fiscal year, we reduce staff by 7.7. Restructuring of our coordinated department heads for 3.2 administrators. We lost 1.5 secretaries, 2 custodians, a nurse. And whenever, wherever possible, we make our best attempt to transfer costs off of the, or away from the general fund to a grant. One of the cabinet members, the position, 50% of the cost, we shifted to a grant for the current fiscal year. Next year, Central Office District, we propose to reduce a counseling administrator for intensive opposition, a secretary, an administrator of our bilingual programs, 50% cost shift to a grant. Propose to eliminate financial support to even start, which is 100,000 annually, and to reduce our professional, excuse me, professional development dollars by approximately 50,000. to reduce our professional development dollars by approximately $50,000, for a loss of 1.4 FTEs.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Yes.
How do you reduce 4/10 of the counseling position?
Who's the administrator, 40% of it, part-time administrator?
Part-time administrator.
Part-time administrator.
They'll keep 60%, for example, and they might be an administrator 40%. That's how we do the FTEs that you were talking about, to account for.
So they split through three periods. Right. On average, on a weekly hours, three days teaching, 60%, remaining two days as an administrator. So we propose to strip up and remove the administrative piece.
And you said that you reorganized the administration 3.2 in the central office? Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, we used to have a full-time administrator in every department. When we reorganized last year for curriculum development, our organization, we combined departments. So now, instead of having one math person and one science, we have a math science person. Instead of having two people, one language arts, one social science, we have one person doing both. In one case, we put the fine applied arts together doing five areas. So we combined positions. We went to kind of divisions instead of individual departments.
Grand totals for the three years. Last year, Elio and I, the grand totals, 14.0 teaching positions. For the current fiscal year, we lost 34.4 FTEs. Propose for next year, 9.4. For a three-year cumulative reduction in workforce of 57.8 positions. Now, we made every attempt, the best attempt, again, to stay away from the classroom. Teachers cumulative over three years, should the 3.8% award granted, 41.2 positions, which is approximately 5% of the teaching workforce. Administrators, we will have lost 5.6, which represents just under 11% of the administrative workforce. Care educators, four and a half positions, 3% of the group. One nurse, which is 4.3% of the group, three custodians at 4%, and two and a half secretaries at 3.3%.
I just wanted to interject that these cuts come during a time where our enrollment is steadily increasing, not by wide margins year to year, but if we talk about 100, 200 students a year to the past, two, three years, you know, we're cutting positions in the environment of a rising student enrollment. So I would keep that in mind as well.
I thought when we were sitting in your Board of Education meetings, I asked you how many teachers were cut, and I thought you told me two.
No, I can answer that question.
Did you remember me asking that question?
I do, and what?
And you said two.
That's because two actual teachers lost their jobs, because we offered-
So what are we talking about here?
Let me explain. The early retirement incentive allowed us to do the cutting through attrition. So instead of eliminating 50 positions or 30 positions, here, there's a total of 24 positions, I'm sorry, 22.2 positions. Instead of having to fire the people and send them on their way, what happened was there were enough people who retired who left. So we didn't have, there were two people, however, because of the special areas they were in, didn't have, and because of their low level of seniority and the positions being cut, actually were laid off. So two people lost their jobs, but we had to eliminate the 22 positions. We didn't fill them.
How many actual teachers in this?
For the current fiscal year, we've lost 22.2 teaching positions.
Positions.
Of the 22.2, only two employees were displaced.
How many displacements will we have?
This year, they'll all be, mostly be displacements, because-
How many?
I don't know, because I don't know how many retirements we'll get and in what areas of certification they'll be in. But I don't expect many. So under this particular budget, for the current, the year coming up, you're talking about 9.4 people, and five of them are teachers. So I would say that out of those five teachers, we may be able to save those folks, because there will be, I believe, enough retirements and maternity leaves and that kind of thing. It's assuming they're in the right areas of certification now, because there's many different certifications with teachers. I can shift people around to save their jobs. Once you go beyond, now they get past the retirees, they get past the leaves, and the people will actually lose their jobs. It's a complicated process, but-
In this year's budget year, of the 22.2 teachers that were, positions eliminated, would they be hired as a outside professional come in and do those, as a subcontract?
No. No, based on seniority rights, they bumped into the vacant, positions vacant that we hired.
So your contract prevents that from happening? They would have to be hired? You can't just eliminate a position in subcontract down there?
Oh, no. No, you'd be ordered by the state to reverse that decision promptly.
So there was a spin-off benefit to the monetary benefit of the E-RIP program. I was driven with the monetary benefit of the E-RIP program, to apply to brace, to slow down the cost, have cost containment going forward in our budget, to the budget. The spin-off benefit, again, is that we were able to retain a very large percentage of the employees' positions were at risk and ultimately reduced, only displacing two. And the absence of a repeat of an E-RIP, I would venture to say, yes, that the majority of the positions identified for next fiscal year, again, without knowing the number of employees that may or may not retire next year, will not only positions be at risk, but employees will be displaced as well.
How do you absorb those positions that are eliminated? How do you absorb that into the classroom? I mean, are the classrooms larger, or do you eliminate programs, or how does it work?
Well, a combination. We try to do the least harm. I mean, for the practicality, it's going to result in larger class sizes. And the only place we can bill those out right now, probably at the K-1 level, because we try to keep those reasonable because of the kind of work that has to happen now. And the second, third, and fourth grades were up to 24, 25. Bob, are you with Bob?
Okay.
Bob, when we did the staffing, that's how we handled it, right? Bob's been doing the staffing at that level, correct?
Yes. My name is Robert Baluski, Assistant Superintendent. We try to keep the staffing at the guidelines that we've applied. Sometimes it gets difficult, and, you know, at every school, depending on the number of classes and the grade level, there'll be disparities. So you'll never get an exact same number across each, you know, grade level by school. Once again, larger schools, you have a greater chance to get to the guideline. Whereas smaller schools, for example, if you had two classes in first grade and you had 32 children, you're going to wind up with two smaller first grades of 16 and 16. But that's just the way the numbers come. And that varies, year by year. It all, basically, evens out at the end over time, because a particular school may have small numbers for a year or two, numbers shift. And then another school may experience that type of situation.
So we increased class sizes in the high school, we've reduced electives. The high school principal's been very vocal about the number of students that are taking two and three study halls, because we don't have the electives available for them to take. You know, some of the options, some schools do let them out early and open the campus, and we've resisted from doing that. So our kids stay in, they're in study hall, large study halls, being supervised by a teacher, but not taking classes that they should be taking. So that's, it's a combination of things that we do.
Is it possible, based on your budget, to do like an organizational matrix for us by position, by school?
Lewis?
An organizational matrix for administration?
No, even like you have your principal and your assistant, and break it down by class, and how many per class, like a model, like your model.
Certainly, a model can be created. The secondary level, it's a little more difficult with class size. That might take me more time. But as far as the teachers in the schools, the administrators in the schools, I could, yeah, that's something I-
I don't need class sizes because we really won't know that.
No, it's constantly infused.
But you're still going to have the class, we just don't know how many.
Yes, I-
Second grade classes.
Right, that's what I need.
I can create that.
Fourth grade classes. That way, when we go first, we can visually compare it to something.
Yes, absolutely. That's not difficult.
I have a question regarding, I know that most of the budget is money for the teachers, salaries for the teachers and benefits. And we spent most of the time here talking about that, but I've gone through this budget paperwork here. How much, I have some questions regarding some of this stuff, like gasoline, almost three-quarters of a million dollars? Why do we spend that much money in gasoline?
We provide, the contract we have with Student Transportation America, our bus company, Board of Education is responsible for-
So it's diesel fuel then for the bus?
That is correct.
It says gasoline here, I just wondered how you spend that much money in gasoline. Now, how much time have we spent trying to trim some of the other things that are in this, aside from the teachers, administrators, and office? And I know that's only a much smaller percentage of the budget, but things like postage, I mean, have we thought about emails? Some of this overtime, I saw an overtime, I think of $180,000. And, I mean, how much time has been spent reviewing these items to perhaps we can save some of these teachers and keep the budget down?
We've obviously had to spend an extraordinary amount of time.
I realize you were going to say that.
An hour. Yes, it's, to put it in perspective here, the, what we'll call, if you'll allow me, please, to build from the bottom up, okay, as you've identified as well, is 80 cents on a dollar goes toward labor in terms of salary, wages, and benefits. Then we have contractual obligations, such as student transportation, we get into purchased services such as fuel, utilities, and other contractual obligations, lease payments on not only infrastructure, technology infrastructure, and some of our building rentals. Bottom line is, at the end of the day, we're probably or likely looking at maybe 10 cents to 15 cents on a dollar for what I care how you even label as discretionary funds. Because the business that we're in collectively, in education, our textbooks, paper supplies, this postage, notices to parents, report cards, is discretionary spending. It really isn't. But even if we were to capture it and label it discretionary spending, when we're looking at best, maybe a couple or few million dollars out of it, it would require, you know, we would have to at least cut 50% from each account, and we simply can't operate in order to have some significant savings. And honestly, I'm a firm believer that every dime counts.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, that every dime counts. And we have, and we've gone through the budget, and I've worked closely with Mr. St. Hilaire on our discretionary accounts. And we reviewed them together, we partnered with the city.
Budget thing here, I see reoccurring examples of expenditures, you know, instructional supplies, postage, all this stuff here.
Have you guys ever think about, I know now everybody has access to email, but when it comes to report cards, I know colleges, all their grades are emailed to the students. I mean, has it ever been?
Right now, we're moving to an open source.
I mean, I know you don't mail them anymore, because my son brings it different, hands it to me.
We've tried, you know, well, you know the population we have, we just can't assume everybody has a computer and go to a library. So for parents and stuff, we do a lot of-
Wait, one second.
Those that don't mail them away.
Same mail, some.
We don't send out any correspondence to that anymore.
And I know we're talking about Nichols when it comes to this stuff, but a lot of Nichols can add up.
You know, I said, Elio, how about we, you know, we-
Try another tape?
Maybe we'll give up our technology now.
Yes, it's defeating everybody.
We're utilizing, we're going to Gmail, and we're telling our teachers that we're not going to be mailing stuff, that we're going to work with them to make sure they check their email during the summer for notices and messages that they need. We're trying to utilize as much as we can. Everything goes home in backpacks, pretty much, for the elementary kids, you know, that stuff gets home. Middle, the high school, I just had a nasty-
You always hear, you always hear parents saying, my kids never bring me home anything.
Yeah, I just got a mail yesterday about that.
So that might be a really good way of getting it to the parents.
We do, we, some stuff has to be mailed out, we use the instant alert when we can. You know, we've done that. You look at that overtime, depending, it's weather sensitive. We have, as you know, pipes break, cost money, people working over the weekend. We've reduced staff in certain areas, and therefore, when we have areas that need people in at certain times of the year, we have to bring them in, because we don't have people who are now employed full-time, so that costs us money. Custodial staff is aging, and, you know, we're limited on how many outside folks that we can bring in. It's a matter of bringing folks in and the cost of overtime to keep those buildings clean. We've thought about closing the buildings to the public, they are public buildings. We think that's a little advice, because that's one area that the board's been able to raise some funds in an enterprise by renting the facilities, that helps us pay for some of the costs. So, you know, we've gone through those, and some of those things, dealing with them every day, they don't make sense to us to make those cuts, and we can't make those cuts. But as Elio said, we're still looking at and trying to reduce, but that side of the enterprise, it's very difficult to reduce when it comes to subs, when it comes to those kinds of areas, because year to year, they change. We try to use a trend analysis as best we can, and we have four or five people that are getting ill or something else happens, and now our budgets are just blown because of people who use sick days and they're entitled to them, that we didn't anticipate. So stuff like that happens to us quite a bit.
Dr. Sal, just like a couple comments I might have. Number one is that, as you mentioned before, you talked about the landmark Superior Court ruling based on what needs to happen in terms of an adequate education for all students in the state of Connecticut. As I understand it, the lower courts have not yet come up with what will constitute an adequate education so that all of our students will have job opportunities in the future, as well as have educational goals that they, higher educational goals that they aspire to. So I sometimes wonder, as we're beginning to work, you know, and you've been working on it very diligently, and I appreciate all that you do, but I sometimes wonder if maybe we're jumping in feet forward too fast, and we yet, we don't know really what the ruling is going to be. One aspect of it is, I know, and in terms of the ninth grade academy, if you would, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for ninth graders, but I also see that it could be very construed, misconstrued as being very costly to the Board of Education and to the damn very taxpayer, because, one, you're going to, you're going to have to have a principal oversee that program, you're going to have four teachers that will be responsible for approximately 100 students. You mentioned before that, you mentioned before, all due respect to you, Dr. Sal, that some of the electives have been cut back. But basically speaking, if you have the ninth grade academy that you're working on, which I, again, I- which I, again, I believe it's a good concept, the idea of electives might not be that important because if one, if, if John Doe is weak in mathematics, the whole idea of the academy would be that he would be able to, with the four teachers meeting every day and at the end of the day, whatever, if John Doe needs to have two math classes rather than an elective, so be it. I think that's very important. But in that light, in that light, I just would like to give you something and I want to, I want to present this in the most, in the most respectful way. Because as I looked at the court ruling and then I, I began to think about being an educator, a former educator for many years, I, I came up with some ideas that tend to be creativity outside the box, so to, so to speak, with maybe some things that we could do to alleviate some of our problems. Now, I don't mean any disrespect by any of these that you read, but I think some of them might have some, some positive things about them that we might take a look at and, and who knows, we might be able to save some money. And would, could I pass these out? Thank you. And again, I don't mean to step on anybody's toes or anything like that, but I, I think that there's some ideas here that tend to be fairly creative.
That's right.
And maybe, maybe that we can start, with this budget, we could start thinking outside the box and if anybody would like them.
Mr. Riley, can I pick that one up?
Oh, and if we would begin to think outside the box a little bit, I know that maybe, just maybe we could do something to help each other, keeping in mind that, one, the children are first, the students first, and then, two, we, we don't want to have any, any teacher laid off because it's a, it's a, it hurts morale something fierce. And, and like the one on retired teachers, I'm a retired teacher administrator. I would gladly volunteer, I'm a hell, excuse me, I'm a very wonderful teacher. And I would gladly come into the classroom free of cost for ten days, ten, five, five days every semester as a sub. I would gladly do that if that would help to keep people on board. So these are just ideas and, and I know that some of them, you look at them and you say, eh, you know, he's tiring of me, I'm not tiring of anyone, I'm just saying, maybe we can think outside the box. Thank you.
Just for clarity's sake, the adequacy ruling is nothing more than the, the definition of what an adequate education is relative to the ability for the state to tax itself to provide resources. It's only a ruling in reference to moving the court case forward. So it's just what's going to be put on the table at the, at our, at the Superior Court is the funding mechanism within the state of Connecticut. New Jersey's been through it, New York's been through it, Maryland's been through it, identifying what is adequate. And when that gets identified, the state of Connecticut, how are you providing for it? They've been waiting ten, eleven months for that because that definition did not go forward. So that ruling that happened last week identified with the word adequacy in that. And there's nothing that's come out of it. There's nothing that's, that's impacted what we're doing relative to adequacy, just so we're clear.
I thought, Dr. Sal, as I understand it, the lower court would, would basically, the state Supreme Court gave the, made the ruling, but they left the, they left the lower courts the responsibility of defining what constitutes that of the word adequacy.
Yeah, but they're only using it in reference to the landmark case for taxation purposes. So now they're going to take that ruling up and part of this, part of the lawsuit against the state of Connecticut is to say, hey, state, you're only providing support up to thirty-two percent of what you should be. Most states provide about fifty percent of what you pay for education. Connecticut is about thirty-two percent. They're saying, what are you doing to make the difference when schools don't have these conditions? And with the lower courts did identify what those conditions adequacy in that. They didn't have that information and that's what they needed clarity on. So that's been helpful. But that, that could be years away in terms of how that may work. Just so, I just wanted to put it on that.
And I think as we, as we move forward, I'm going to make some comments to what we said earlier. I think we have to be prepared to tighten our belts one or two notches a little bit more. And we've got to look into it with that notion as well. I mean, I spent almost an hour and a half today going through this budget as Councilman Akonti did and I must have at least picked out a hundred thousand dollars in savings from my point of view. I'm not a teacher either. For example, advertising for recruiting, thirty thousand dollars for budgeting for it. Answering services, twenty-five thousand dollars. I think we have to look at this from direct costs, which are our teachers and benefits, and our indirect costs, which are our advertising, our answering services, other things that don't necessarily relate, go directly with teaching or indirectly support it. I think as we go through this budget, we have to look to see where can we start cutting if we have to without going after our teachers and benefits. And I think we, as we go through, I mean, it was mentioned this evening by Councilman Akonti somewhere, we should be able to, to try to cut costs. Auto insurance, ten thousand dollars. Now, I don't know whose car is being insured for ten thousand dollars for the auto insurance and I don't think that's a bust. But those are things we've got to start looking at from us to the board to see where can we start cutting and trying to reduce those small things. You know, if we start adding these things up, like you said, every nickel adds up to a dime and a quarter, we could probably could save five hundred thousand dollars just by tightening the belt one or two notches, which could go a long way in saving, you know, six or seven, eight teachers' jobs. And I think by incorporating some of Councilman Riley's suggestions, which these are the same suggestions that were made last year and the year before, and I start to think we really got to start looking at some of these out of the box suggestions, you know, especially about closing the school down for the month of December. You know, I know it may be hard to implement, but, you know, that's still a big savings from fuel point of view since the school's closed three weeks out of that month anyway. Due to the Christmas vacations and then, and Thanksgiving vacations, it's closed seems more than it's open. So those are the things we've got to start looking at to try to save, to try to save some money because, you know, I don't know what the mayor's budget's going to come out, but if it's two or three notches what you have here, we really got to start looking to try to, you know, rotate it.
Not that you haven't tried.
Not that you haven't tried.
But we need to try again. We need to try. You know, I think Mr. Riley mentioned something about freshman academy. Where does that fit in?
Yeah, but that's something to do, that's an educational priority that we looked at in study and it goes to include, it just so happens not to cost anything. But, you know, and all due respect, what we do on the education side is that, you know, we're empowered to try to provide the best educational program for our kids and that's what the money does for us. If we need to look at some items with suggestions, hey, that's cool, give them to me, we'll look at it. If I can do them, we'll do them. If not, we don't do them. You know, we can't break union contracts. There are things here that I would like to do that Sal can't do. There are things on this thing that makes sense we can't do because of contract. All right, I said before in my preparatory remarks, the teachers are coming to the table and they're looking at things, the custodians are, our vendors though. Did we miss some things? Maybe. But in general, when it comes to the educational program of how we develop our curriculum, how we assess our curriculum, how we engage our students, that's our business. That's our business and I think we do it well. Vender has done it well for a while, okay? And it may not be something everybody agrees with, but we think the time and effort that we put into it makes sense for our kids. Then we try to do it, then we try to fund it. The academy is a restructuring. It's utilizing, making connections with kids at the, at the ninth grade. Our highest, the highest number of students that we have suspended, expelled, dropping out, fighting, all of that are in ninth and tenth grades. This academy, it doesn't have a special principal. We have, it'll be one of our APs be in charge of the freshman school. We're going to isolate our councils so that we have a good transition program. We're going to put support at that, at the ninth grade level to make the transition to the high school, one that the kids have a chance of making it to the upper school. So a lot of, you know, it, it's done in large schools. So we're doing that, we're not breaking it out, there isn't really a charge for that at all.
Well, what was the other thing somebody was talking about, Scott? That you're going to have two levels of teaching? Right now, there's three or there's four.
No, that's our, that's, uh, the State Board of Education.
Has it been talked about?
Well, no, it hasn't. As I said, the State Board of Education.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
It's not a budget issue, it doesn't, there's no additional cost related to that. So it's educational priorities.
But then, if, there isn't a cost to it in terms of students, there is a cost that would happen in terms of professional development, in terms of what we need to do.
I think there's a cost to the children though. It may not be a cost to the budget, but there's a cost to the children when.
Well, Colleen, again, I'll go back to what I'm saying to you. We don't work for Danbury Board of Ed, we don't work for you. We work for the State Board of Ed. They have come out and said, the schools, the fifteen schools have been identified, which Danbury is one, need to detract your high school. We have multiple tracks at our high school that needs to be detracted. But we're working on levels, multiple levels for kids. For example, you'll take algebra with Sal and then if you take algebra with Elliot, it'll be a different curriculum. And then if you take algebra with Irving, it'd be another curriculum. So what we're saying is that we're leveling the playing field and we're trying to minimize those levels. There's levels for specialty students. There'll be a regular, there'll be an honors, there'll be an AP, those will all be there. The kids will have to qualify to be in them. But as far as a cost and a budget, no, I mean, that's not really a budget issue. That's an educational priority that we would do whether we had money from you or not. This is the right thing to do for kids, you know? But again, that becomes our side equation that we do each and every day with our teachers. And we've had people work the last two weeks developing curriculums and standards, you know, working on all that.
Really? I know, I know that in the past, I know there's some council members here with us tonight that have talked about merging the IT departments with the city hall. And we, that has never been. Anybody want to add?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it on because I, you know, we looked into it and our high points, using, we have an IT department that's understaffed right now. We can't afford to give you any, we don't have. And yours is not staffed to the level where you can give us any. And they don't, our people don't work during the summer, our techies, it's going to make a difference. So, you know, where we, where we work together is ensuring data and doing that kind of stuff. If we had a very large staff that worked twelve months, there might be some possibilities. But we looked in, I think last year when people asked us to do it and you looked into it once before, that's what came out of it and we just couldn't do that. You know, the maintenance staff, your maintenance staff takes care of our buildings. We only have two people that are there. So that works well, you know, in that part. They take care of the grounds. But the IT thing, just, we don't, we don't have, the needs are much too different for it to make any sense to really work for us. Did you make any?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that is there was a presentation to the board recently regarding our IT staffing. We are, we have ten thousand kids, we have eighteen schools. We are grossly understaffed for our IT now. For us to take on the city's IT or to take on some of these cities' IT or to even merge with it, there aren't enough people between the city and the board to handle the city and the board now. So somewhere, either on the city's side or our side, you're going to have to staff up. Even if we just had the same number of people, the people you have, if you were to assume that they're all together right now, there aren't enough people. There just aren't and we're suffering for it. So we can't take on the city under our condition, the city can't take on us. So the only real issue is are we prepared to staff up?
I'm just surprised because it was mentioned by the city and I didn't think they would offer some program or something like that.
They don't have the staff.
If they didn't have the staff to back it up.
They don't, we're a much larger operation frankly. Our IT operation is much, much larger.
Okay.
So we couldn't do it.
I'm just surprised it was brought up by the city side.
I, well, I don't speak for the city side for you.
I have a question for you.
They know what they're talking about.
In your cost comparison under book on page six here and compared it to page five, the Magnet School revenue that's on oh nine, two thousand and ten is not on two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Is that buried somewhere else?
No, it's, we, we transferred the accounting for the Magnet School to our grants and state federal projects. It's no longer part of the general fund accounting. All of the revenue that we will receive or collect from the State Department of Education as well as contributions or tuitions received by our partnering school districts are accounted separately under, under several grants as they've been removed from the general, they have been removed by the general fund. The revenues and the related expenditures have been removed.
And this is an important point because if you recall the past two or three years, the Magnet School, because of the state reimbursement rate does not cover our operating costs, we've been running the Magnet School at an operating deficit for the past two or three years. That deficit's absorbed in our general fund. By being able to move those expenses to the, to the grants, we effectively take that pressure off of our, our, our general fund, which I think was six hundred thousand dollars.
The six hundred, six hundred thousand dollars is a local match, but of the transfer within our budget was an additional nine hundred thousand. So the Magnet School comes at a cost of one and a half million dollars per year to the city.
So your budget for next year, what you said, is one point five million dollars deficit. So you're going to go out and get grants for that?
This is the next year.
No, we, we, we have built within our budget, we transferred, we will, we will, we anticipate receiving or collecting approximately two million dollars in receipts next year for the Magnet School. We've, we've, we've transferred two million dollars worth of expenditures over to the federal state grants. The spill, yes, the spillover, which are the Danbury's cost, cost share, jury forward with the, with the general fund. It's a better accounting method to separate all the receipts from our partnering district in the state of Connecticut and to properly treat them as a grant and not as revenue or receivables to the general fund.
So that's, so that's the way I understand it. So the one point five million dollars deficit that you're projecting for next year for the Magnet School?
Built in.
On page four is in page six built in.
That is correct.
So the added to one point, the added to one point to six hundred and sixteen million dollars budgeting for next year, one point five of that.
Probably one point five for Magnet.
Is the Magnet School loss that Danbury has those.
That, it's Danbury's cost share for the, for the Magnet School.
Correct. So for two hundred and thirty kids, we have to pay one point five million dollars?
Well, yes, I mean, it's one and a half out of three million, it's about, it's under fifty percent, about forty, it's about forty-eight percent. Majority of the students are Danbury students. We have approximately a sixty forty split, sixty percent Danbury and we're paying for forty-eight percent of the total cost.
So we're not really losing then?
No, we're not losing. I mean, it's, and, and, look, from a city standpoint, we're, we're beneficiary of a brand new building paid by, by the state to the two hundred and twenty million dollars. Obviously, there's going to be annual curing costs associated with a quote unquote free building. Our cost is a million and a half, forty-eight cents on a dollar, while sixty percent of the students are Danbury students.
So just, I'm not suggesting we, we do this, this is hypothetically, so I understand, if we were to close the Magnet School down, for example, would we save one point five million dollars?
Not necessarily so because you would still have the students. So the sixty percent of the population, you still have to house and educate the students so they revert back to, to their, let's call them their home schools.
So currently, current schools cannot absorb those two hundred and thirty as exists today.
That is, that is correct. It was a capacity driven school construction, school construction. And just, if you'll allow me to do, on, on a few of the other, a few of the items that were identified earlier, while, while they may appear to be frivolous types of expenditures, the, you know, we do not have a fleet of vehicles for administrators or educators. We have a very limited and they are typically reserved for, they are reserved for custodial and maintenance staff, for the couriers. We have a plumber that is needed at, say, the high school. We have a van for his supplies and for, for the equipment. So that ten thousand dollars for insurance liability is associated with a handful of maintenance vehicles. The, the twenty thousand dollars that we expend on an annual basis for answering service, not to be confused with voicemail, we all have voicemail on it. That twenty thousand dollars is we have over seven hundred teachers looking for the district. At any given day, and kindly correct me if I'm wrong, but at any given day, the absentee rate can, can get us. the absentee rate can, can get as high as what percentage of our teachers?
Well, we had, the worst I've seen it is a hundred, which is about twelve percent.
Okay, so let's, let's cut it, let's say it's seven, seven to ten percent. So on any given day, we, we will likely have between sixty to eighty teachers to call in absent. We need a person to, to accept the call, record it on the teacher's behalf, the district's behalf, and also arrange for a substitute to come in and cover. So that twenty thousand dollars is not for office telecommunication. It is, it is the wages paid to an individual to serve as, let's say, the recording secretary for a substitute service.
And let me clarify that, if I may, Elio. Because I, whenever you say wages, it implies there's benefits. This particular person gets no benefits. It's essentially a part-time person who works as a contractor.
So while they may appear at face level or surface level, a frivolous type of expense or expenditure, then we do our best to contain the cost. And we simply cannot go without having a substitute service when seventy to eighty teachers on a daily basis will call in.
Wow.
That's incredible.
If I could interject as a teacher, it's, it's not all sick teachers. It's often for workshops and so, such things.
Right, it's not just people calling. That's a fair point. It's not just people calling sick.
Okay, because that was making me sick.
It's emergency, it's personal days, it's military leave, it's all kinds of things.
But you would know that. You would know that in advance.
Of course. Wouldn't you think though? Military leave and jury duty and all those things, you kind of know that.
No, we, we do. No, we do know it. We do know it.
I guess, I guess the way I look at this is your team, you know, you got, you want what your team wants. And I'll say, I'll speak for myself. I know what my team wants.
I thought we were all the same.
My team are the people in the city of Danbury. And we got to keep our taxes low somehow. I mean, four point two million dollars, something like two mils or two and a half mils on, on, on our taxpayers. I mean, I just find that just incredible. And these times, I just don't see how we're going to burden our taxpayers that much more. I mean, I'm telling you, I'm going in this thing, I'm telling you, I'm going into this thing. Oh my God. We just can't burden these people with this.
Go ahead.
No, I, you know, I started out tonight by telling you, these are the hard times.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not going to sit here and say that we don't need things. You're going to have to decide how much we can do with them. We'll have to decide of how we're going to use education, what lives, and we'll maybe can. But I think that to think that we can do business as usual, even if we can go, we can find another, whatever we can do, is, is, is not going to happen.
Dr. Sal, I've got to tell you, you know, I spent many a Sunday going through this, going through all this thing. You know, the fact, the fact that the administrators are getting raises is like the first page here, and I just find that being, I'm a little amazed at that, to be honest with you. I mean, I'll lay my cards on the table. In this, in this economic climate, for, for people to get raises right now, that are, I understand contractual things, but I have, it, it doesn't settle well with, with this guy.
You know, people, again, last year, something was arbitrated. And if you know anything about the arbitration rules, I'm sure that you do.
No, I don't.
Well, what happens in arbitration, they do a comparison of, of the payment, and there's an arbitrator that decides. In, in the case that they made a decision was that the administrators that we've had in the district were underpaid at a level that required the kind of increase that they received. There was not one that the district said that we could do at that time. So someone did that analysis. If people, you know, if, if folks are getting raises and they're working with us, the administrators, they are, they've taken furlough days, we've taken furlough days. If we're saying to them, they need the increase, and you're saying, no, well, you know, we have to work with them every day. And we make our recommendation, and arbitrator looks at it and says, you know what, guys? You're wrong, board. We're going to, we're going to award this. That gets awarded. That's how the arbitration rule works in Connecticut. That's what happened a year ago. And then the last contract that you're going to be seeing is one that's been mediated. I mean, I can't, I can't say anymore about that. If you don't like it, I might not like it. But in fact, that's what I got to deal with.
I think what Bob's saying is we're hoping that we can be above arbitration or mediation. That, that when the teachers do settle, do contracts and negotiate their salaries, or the unions, whoever, whoever takes care of it, takes into consideration their, their fellow teachers and students and the community and the times that we're in. And I don't know, maybe it's some.
Well, if I, if I can just point out, this is my thing. I negotiate with all the unions. So I can answer these questions.
I'm not saying that anybody doesn't deserve, everybody deserves to get paid for what they do. And let me also point out that there are a lot of people right now that are working harder than ever for less money. I know quite a few people that have, haven't seen a raise in the last four years. And these are, and, and teachers and administrators, and I'm only going to make a point, have a job guarantee. That in itself is huge. So I'm hoping that within the next time that the teachers work on their contracts and the administrators work on their contracts, that they take into consideration what we're talking about right now. Because that is the biggest part of our budget. And that's what affects the budget the most. So I'm just hoping that, you know, they realize it and take it into consideration. Go ahead.
Okay. They did. The administrators, we negotiated with them this year. I've notified the mayor. We have ironed out the final details and we will be filing it. The, the council has the ability to review that within thirty days and reject it if they choose. The Board of Education ratified it. It is a one point two nine percent effective rate increase. It's a two point one six increase overall, but it's frozen for ninety days. That increase is, in my opinion, and I'm a labor employment attorney in addition to being a director of human resources for the district, is extremely low compared to other districts. If we, if the council rejects, and we'll have this discussion another day, but if you reject, we will go to arbitration. And it is very likely, certainly, they will be awarded that if they choose. But they then have the right, they being the administrators' union, to go and ask for a higher number, which I also believe they will, could very likely get. There comes a cost with that. There's attorney's fees with that. There's all kinds of issues. The entire cost of the administrators' contract for all of the administrators, for all of the schools, with, and they gave us another additional percentage on their cost sharing, is forty-five thousand dollars in our hundred and sixteen million dollar budget. The teachers, as you can see, it's obviously a much higher number because there's approximately eight hundred teachers. The teachers also took it into account. If you remember last year, the council chose to reject the teacher contract. That was a ratified contract. They could have gone to arbitration with their four and a quarter percent increase and probably won. Instead, they renegotiated to two and a quarter. And that, I think, was followed by the administrators' union, who then said, you know what? Let's, over a two-year period, over the same two-year period, let's not get any more than the teachers did. And that's exactly what happened. So they have taken into account other unions. The custodians have a zero percent increase for this year. The food service group negotiated a zero percent increase for next year. Sorry, this year, two percent for next year. Custodians are zero percent this year. I can't announce what the paraprofessionals are, but I can assure you, they've been extremely, extremely mindful, and I think you will be pleased. The secretaries are about to start negotiations for next year as well. So the unions have taken it to account. And I'm not, you know, I negotiate with them, but I should give them credit where credit is due, and they have.
Thank you. Any other questions? I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I know it took a lot of your time. But I wanted to make it open. I wanted it, I wanted, you know, my council, my committee members to be able to ask questions and get as much information as possible because we have lots to go over. We will be having an ad hoc meeting, you know, on this. And so there'll be more questions, but that's why I wanted to have this bulk of the meeting so we can get a lot of it out and open. So we can mull it over and then come back and talk about it some more. I appreciate your, your time. Thank you very much.